Committee. Today is June thirteenth at six thirty P M. And I'd like to recognize the committee members that are here with us. I have a school committee member, Williams, to my right. I also have the esteemed school committee member, Columore, to my right. And over to my left is a school committee member, Willahen. Also on the committee is city councillor Howard Graney. And our city council president is online and also a member of the committee. That's city council president, Tessa Murphy-Rombeletti. And then yours truly, the chair of the joint committee, Kevin Jordan. I also see we have some esteemed members. Our Ward three school committee member is with us. I also see councillor Ocasio is here from Ward two. I see our at-large school committee member, La Fabre, is with us as well. And I also see that in attendance online is councillor Divine. And we have, we have also saw a number of esteemed guests, including our school superintendent and receiver, Anthony Soto is with us, and from the finance office, Sean Mangano from the Hoyoke High School. So we welcome everyone for attending. First item on the agenda is if we could have a motion to take off the minutes of March fourteenth.
Move to receive the minutes.
Receive and approve the minutes? Okay, is there any changes or anything we need to make? Or is everybody comfortable with those? Okay, a motion's been made. Is there a second to approve? Seconded by a school committee member, Willahen. Oh, I'm sorry, school committee member, Williams.
Yes, sir.
All right, she's quick. If there's no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Oh, and actually, before we continue further, because one of our members is online, I do have to say this, that we need to, one procedural housekeeping matter, is a motion to take a roll call vote that for the purposes of this meeting would be applicable to all motions to remove an item from the table, place items on the table, package items, or suspend the rules unless there is an objection. If someone would be kind enough to support that move. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Columore. Any discussion of that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Aye.
Thank you.
Move to take item number two off the table.
Okay, motion to take item number two off the table. This is an order introduced by councillor Jordan, and it's relit, and I'll read the order. It's ordered that the school department provide the city council with a report on their plan to use the remaining thirteen million in Esser funds by September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. Also, please provide us a report of how the prior forty-four million thus far has been spent and how that was used. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Oh, so moved. Thank you. Under discussion, we did get a prior report about the past money from, from Mr. Mangano and Mr. Soto. If you guys could both talk or start to address how we're doing with the, what was the remaining thirteen million? Are we on track for getting that all covered and used by September thirtieth? The committee would love to hear from Mr. Soto or Mr. Mangano. I would recognize either one of you if you have an update for us. And I believe we also received recently a written report, if you want to refer to that as well. Mr. Soto?
Yeah, I have Sean with me here, but we did provide you with a, a report that, that still includes how we spent the money over the past three years and, and has a projection of moving forward, highlighting that we're, you know, one of the things we want to do is, we're going to be doing is replacing all of our student devices and staff devices. So they're really, you know, typically devices could last anywhere between three and five years. And our plan moving forward is to make sure that all students in grades, kindergarten through fifth grade, have brand-new devices for next year, which will get us to a place where we, we have some predictable, manageable budget allocations for, for technology, and we could get into a regular lease cycle. So we've, we've been in a lease cycle right now, but what we've seen over the last few years is that, you know, devices have been, are pretty much on their, on their way out. They're, they've aged out. We have a plan moving forward for next year to, to try to get, you know, try to make sure that we're, we're taking care of these devices. You know, we got a brand-new kind of restitution-type policy that's going to be under discussion at the school committee level. You know, I think we have a responsibility to teach, teach our kids how to, you know, just take care of, of their, their own property. So right now, we have a Chromebook cart in every single classroom. So there's no real sense of ownership, and we want to move to a place where the same kid has the same device throughout the, the school day. But that's a big investment we're making in, in purchasing all those devices. Same thing with teachers and staff members that have devices. We're going to be getting brand-new devices next year. I've done some work for, for facilities improvements and plan on doing some more. We're working through, hopefully going to be able to do some HVAC projects this upcoming summer. We did get some bids back that were a lot higher than we anticipated. So, you know, trying to, we gotta work, work through what we're going to be able to do and not do. But we're confident those funds will be spent and in your packet. And Sean can speak to this. The state, the federal government kind of provided us with some guidance on, on being able to extend for any projects that we have earmarked, being able to extend liquidation period. Sean, you want to talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, so currently the deadline, the deadline to obligate funds via contract is September thirtieth. That's not changing under the new rules. But prior to this new extension period that was just announced, we had to spend all the money by November thirtieth, or basically request all of our money by November thirtieth for services performed. Under the new extension rules, we can ask for that period of, of spending to be extended out until January of two thousand twenty-six, so we can extend it pretty far out into the future. We will likely do that for at least one project. We have the window and door project going on right now at Donahue and Lawrence and the Boiler Dean. And we're on track to finish that project on time, but just in case, just make sure that there's a, as a safety net, we can request an extension that will allow us to spend that money over a longer period of time. We, we were on a webinar yesterday that they said, you know, if there's any chance that something might get delayed, a window, like the, the actual equipment, windows or doors or something like that might get delayed, we should submit an extension. So there's a couple of projects like that we're looking at possibly submitting extensions for, to make sure all the money gets spent, but we do have a plan to spend everything.
Great. I don't know, any members have, anyone here have a question? Committee member, Willahen?
Thank you. Not a question, just a comment. Just basically, I know some of the problems that the local, local towns are, are facing is just getting enough talented and qualified vendors to, to bid on this, this type of work because all the schools are, they're trying to spend the money all at once. So the vendors are kind of cherry picking which projects that they want. So that's one of the problems that we're having, that there's so many projects in the pipeline throughout Western Mass or the state, but there's so few vendors that are qualified. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, oh, Ms. Williams?
Sean, I thought that the last meeting we had, if the money was not used, we could put it in another fund. So we can get an extension, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I, I think it might be a different fund you're talking about. So that for Esser, there's not another fund that we would put it in. We have to obligate all of it by September thirtieth, which we're on track to do. But once it's obligated via contract, we can request an extension in terms of how long we have to spend it. So we can go from having two months to spend it to over twelve months to spend it. And that's, again, for a couple of the projects, we might be looking to do that.
Thank you. It was Esther.
Councillor Graney.
Quickly, Sean, I also understand that Hoyoke High School just received a grant from the state for half a million bucks just for this purpose, for technology and things like that. Do you have any contingency plans for that?
I think that may be the dean grant that we just received. It was a, I believe it was a capital grant to outfit a couple of our vocational programs, our advanced manufacturing program, and I think our nursing program. So though, that is unrelated to the expenditures we're considering with this money. The expenditures we're considering with this is, are mostly HVAC, HVAC projects that are left. That, that grant will fund more enhancements to the, to the vocational programs in terms of equipment.
Thank you. Sean or Anthony, if, could you walk through just real quick how we're doing on the window and door project, how that's progressing? Are we twenty-five percent of the way in? Are we fifty percent? If you had to put a number on it approximately, how, how's that progressing?
I would say we're probably still closer like twenty-five percent because a lot of the work can't begin until school is out, which is coming up. All the contractors are on board. We started receiving some preliminary bills for submittals and things like that. I'm not aware of any delays to the project schedule, which should have substantial completion by the time school starts. So again, we're going to request an extension just in case, but I haven't heard of any delays with that project, and it'll start to ramp up really quickly as soon as school gets out.
Okay, great.
Yeah, and I, to that point, so once we get the schedule, I'd be happy to share that with you. We did this, we did this, I want to say, five years ago with Sullivan, Morgan, and Kelly. And, you know, Sean mentioned that substantial product, progress had to be made, or basically, we had to be pretty much done with the project before school started. But they also have a window of like punch list items that could be done that shouldn't be as disruptive to the student day. And that deadline was October fifteenth, based on, based on the last project. I'm, I'm assuming that with this project, there'll be something similar. So it'll be substantially complete before school starts, and then there'll be some, some punch list items that have to happen probably between the first day of school and sometime in October is when they gotta be completely done and offsite. But those details will, will, will get them pretty soon.
Okay, great. I had one, just one other question is, and I was wondering if maybe we could use the Esser money was, we had to get like a tractor slash gator for the high school. The DPW was going to use city funds. We appropriated it, but they were going to check with you. I was hoping they might have followed up. It was going to be approximately thirty thousand dollars, and it was going to be maintained and kept at the high school. It was strictly for the high school campus. Is there any chance that we could maybe use some of the Esser money to cover the cost of, of that vehicle for the high school?
Yeah, yeah, so the individual did follow up with us. So anything over thirty thousand, that's equipment, we have to submit a, a capital expense form to the state and get permission. So we have not done that. We, because the funds are essentially all obligated at this point, we haven't gone forward and requested that. But we are maintaining a list of, of projects essentially that if something, one of our other project comes in and it's less expensive, or bids come in lower than expected, if money becomes available, things we could do. And that is one of the things that we've flagged on this list of, of potential projects. We have many others as well, but, but the person did follow up. It's just so you are aware.
So I'd be happy to do that if, if something were to come up and, like Sean said, if one of the other projects came in lower or for whatever reason, we couldn't do one, I'd be happy to put that at the top of our priority list.
Thank you.
And keep you updated, keep the council updated.
Thank you. We, we appreciate it. Additional questions?
One quick. Yeah, just quickly, I know the, the facility improvement, so on and so forth, but is there anything that's dedicated basically to the security of our buildings? Are these doors going to be locked, efficiently locked from, are there any security devices that are going to go into the schools to, to prevent intruders from entering or anything like that?
Yeah, we've already made investments. So we have a system called the Vigilon. So I want to say four or five years ago, we, we switched from a key system to a key fob system, and we made sure that, that we have substantial camera coverage in all of our schools, particularly at the main entrances. And our middle and high schools actually have more coverage than, than the other schools. Our elementary school is not as much. There's not as much coverage inside the building, but, you know, right now, I, you know, I have, we have the ability to log, log in online and see all the camera footage live in all of our schools. Our alarm, our alarm systems are functioning properly. And most recently with Esser money, we were able to build out, and some grant money that we had, build out what they call safety, secure vestibules at our, at Sullivan School and at Morgan School, Dean and Hoyoke, and at Hoyoke High School. So Hoyoke High School, Sullivan, Dean, and Morgan School all have what they call safety vestibules, which means that any, any visitors that would be coming to our school, they, they are led into, in, in the doors, and they don't have full access to the school. They're kind of locked into this like temporary space so that the, the main office can see who it is and then allow them to pass through to, to the main office. In the past, if we, we would buzz people into those schools, and they could actually have access to the whole building without, without having to go through that like safety vestibule. So we're in pretty good shape in that aspect, you know, with, with the new windows, we'll, you know, we're hoping that we can get shades, part of our crisis plan, and in any active shooter situation, it's typical that you have shades so that like, if, if you need to bring them down for whatever reason, you can do that. All of our schools have that, and we would want to make sure that that happens with these new window projects as well.
And your P A. systems and your lockdown instructions are all up to date?
Yeah, our, our safety plans are all up to date. I'm not gonna, like, we have made investments on our, our phone systems and our intercom systems at some schools. Some schools, I, I'll be honest with you, they're not. So, you know, I don't want to name any schools, but one school we plan on, we don't want to make significant investments in because when the new middle school is built, you know, we're going to be moving kids to the new middle school anyway. I know that that intercom system is not, it's not where I'd like it to be, but schools have, have, you know, have come up with, you know, ways to, to accommodate those, those challenging issues. You know, that building, I believe, was built in like nineteen-ten or something like that. So the intercom system is not, not, not great.
Also, Howie?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Willahen?
Thank you for that, Mr. Soto. Yeah, I just want to acknowledge that the school committee has been, we're aware of the facilities, you know, the, the lack of maintenance over the years. I know Mr. Columore serves on our, one of our, the longest I remember, and he's always, he's a proponent of maintaining the buildings and making sure they're safe and they're clean. We've actually changed the name of the committee that I chair from the finance committee to finance and operations, just to acknowledge that. And so moving forward, that's going to be, the school facilities are going to be discussed at length in terms of the, the maintain, the continued maintenance of them. We don't want to fall behind. I think this, our current mayor has made it a priority of keeping them not only safe, but safe and clean. I just want to provide to the committee as a public document, this is just a partial list of the improvements that the schools have done through the Esser money and through our expertise from Mr. Soto and Mr. Mangano, just in terms of the upgrades. I'm not going to read them all, just Hoyoke High, we've done, we've done security cameras, Sullivan security cameras, HVAC upgrades of Sullivan, district-wide telephone upgrades, intercom upgrades, furniture fixtures, Lawrence School had door replacements, Ian White HVAC upgrades, McMahon Boilers. So just made a, a long list. This is just a partial list, so I, I'd like to submit this for the record with the committee here, and then we can always have further follow-up.
Okay. Motion to enter this into the minutes. This is a communication of April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, from the executive director of finance, Mr. Mangano, giving a overview of the different projects relative to Esser-funded facility improvements. Move to receive and accept? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. All right. Anything else, members? Mr. Soto?
Yeah, I just, I want to comment on what school committee member, Willahen, said. When I got here nine years ago, there, there was definitely a, a lack of investment in all of our schools. And one thing I appreciated about the position that I was in is that I was not only in charge of finance, but I was also in charge of facilities. So when you had a different person in charge of finance than facilities, I could understand where people could advocate for, hey, we need to upgrade our schools, and the person that is controlling the funds can say, we don't have the money to do it. But, you know, I, I had the, the pleasure to be in a role where I can see where we had resources, and I knew where we had needs in facilities. And anybody on our facilities team can tell you that we've made more investments in the last nine years than they've had. You know, we have, Whitney, Whitney Anderson is, is a, a classic example of somebody that has been here for a very long time and has seen the lack of investment of our schools. And, you know, we've, we've done, we've come a long way. So yes, we have older buildings, but our, our facilities crew and our custodians, we did a lot of culture work with amongst our facilities team too, to take some pride in the work and take some pride in wanting to, our schools to look better. And, you know, our schools have not, never looked better than they, than they have these, you know, these past few years because our facilities teams are, we're investing in them, and our facilities team is really taking ownership and pride in the work that they're doing. So I wanted to thank them for that.
Great. And we thank you all collectively, the school committee members, our school leadership, for making these important investments. You know, you're doing the right thing with the money. You're helping to defray a lot of costs of things that we might not otherwise be able to afford, and you're reinvesting in our capital, and that's going to pay long-term dividends. And you're doing a lot of great programming with these monies. Good for you. Great, great job. And also extremely commendable, all of you, in particular you, Mr. Soto, relative to the graduation recently at Hoyoke High School that I attended. And just want to, just say thank you to everybody. And of course, we have our poet laureate over here who did another, you know, Maya Angelou has nothing on you. So we, there, there we go. So just a great job by all of you. So with that having been said, unless there's anything else, a motion that this order's been complied with?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. All right.
Can I just make a statement?
Absolutely.
Always remember you're a knight.
That's right.
Okay.
That's right. That's right.
Move to take item three off the table?
Motion to take item number three off the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Item number three is a order filed by councillors Jordan, Graney, and Divine dated May twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four, ordered that the Joint Committee on the City Council and School Committee review the process for the naming of the new middle school, replacing the Peck Middle School at the same location, including the apparent desire by some to possibly change the name from the superintendent, William R. Peck, who was the superintendent of our schools from nineteen-twenty to nineteen-sixty-three, and a World War One naval veteran, and had this middle school named for him by the city in nineteen-seventy-three, by the way. It says nineteen-seventy, but he died in seventy. It was named in seventy-three. That the Joint Committee and Law Department also review our ordinances and rules on the naming of Hoyoke-owned facilities and buildings, specifically chapter twelve of our ordinance, so that we ensure we are following the proper procedure for the naming of a new school, which is a city-owned municipal building. So under discussion with that, the good news that I had heard at one of the building committee reports is, I think we're all on the same page as to process now, so we're good there. And perhaps the school committee members or one and all want to talk about maybe where you see this at in terms of the process of the naming, or is there going to be a recommendation coming to the council? Or is it the expectation the council should just act and move forward? But typically, the process is that the department in head of that area would make a recommendation to the council, and then the council would vote on the matter. So councillor Graney, would you like to be heard?
Yeah, having been one of the first teachers when Peck School opened up and the naming of that school, I thought it was very appropriate at the time. And as time goes by, I still think it's very appropriate that we maintain that name of a very fine gentleman who I had pleasure of meeting on more than one occasion and was a true, a true patriot, served in World War One, and I would certainly love to see that the, the new, new building would maintain his name and go forward as the William R. Peck Middle School. Thank you.
Thank you. The only thing I would add to that is, I know that, and I know councillor Divine has spoken eloquently on this topic as well, and she, she's more than encouraged to, to say a few words, but I will just say as well that doing some research myself, and there's some really good historical stuff out there on Superintendent Peck, really a pioneer. Of course, the first one, the most obvious one being the youngest, I think still to all time ever superintendent of schools in the state of Massachusetts history. And he did amazing work for women, women teachers. Of course, in those days, it was almost taboo for married women to, to, to be teachers. It was almost expected that once you were married, you would no longer be a teacher. It's, it's unbelievable. The times do certainly change for the better in that regard, for sure. But he, he really said, no, 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 we're not going to have policies like that. And he really took a lot of heat at the time, when you go back, about fighting for teacher salaries. And he also was very committed to supporting education for disabled children. And so there, there, there you go. So I, I just wanted to make sure those few points made, and obviously, the building in his honor, unfortunately, the building didn't live up to his honor, right? It, he, his name was, the lights for him were brighter than the building, unfortunately. So luckily, we were able to replace it with an, an amazing new building coming, but that would be more in fitting with his name. So.
You stole some, you stole my thunder.
Well, take, take some of that thunder and give us some lightning too.
He was all for women, women's rights. He also would send teachers to homes of disability people so that they could also be learning at home. So I, I was impressed with him when I checked out what he did. So I'm all for keeping the name also.
I'm interested if, a school committee member, did, did you know Mr. Peck or get a chance to meet him?
Yes, I knew.
Could, could maybe you share a, a few thoughts like how we did? I would be interested if you, I don't know if you, what kind of a man? Obviously, he, I was only a child when he passed away, but I would be interested in your perspective.
One of the things that struck me is he was always very cordial in inviting people to his office and talking to him about not just.
in inviting people to his office and talking to him about not just the school, but education throughout the city.
Interesting.
And, uh, he, he would set a time, a Monday morning, a Tuesday morning, or something like this, for anyone to wanna come in and meet with him and discuss any problems that were occurring in the city of Hoyok pertaining to education.
Right.
And he steered them in the right direction on where to go to find out information.
Wow.
And he was a great person working together with the Chamber of Commerce.
Oh, okay.
They always worked together. He would meet with them and talk with them and say, hey, do you have any ideas what we should do? And believe me, he kept our schools up.
Excellent.
He spent the money wisely and he, he kept the schools in excellent condition.
Right.
Where the taxpayer didn't have to come every few years to the city council and say, hey.
Need more money.
We need more money, we need more money.
Right.
No, he was very thoughtful of, uh, the taxpayers. And he was also thoughtful of, like you said, the teachers.
Right.
And not, not just the teachers, but the whole staff.
Right.
In the school system.
Right.
He talked to them and he'd tell them, you know, we only have this so much money. But if I can scrape up some money by not spending here and not spending there, I can give raises to different people.
Right.
And he was, he was excellent at that. And, and he had a good staff.
Yep.
He always appointed a good people to work with him. And going, going back to, uh, oh, how you can remember, Mr. Bosworth, of course, was one of, one of the wonderful teachers we had in the school system and, uh.
Yeah, he was in the math department, very excellent teacher.
Excellent teacher.
Mr. Bosworth, yeah. I just, and duly noted too, one, one, one thing about, uh, Dr. Peck. He knew, he, he was, as, as, uh, school committee columnist said, he knew everybody in the city. And he was fair and equitable. This was before collective bargaining. So there were no, there were no set contracts for teachers. But he was a fair person and he, he, he looked at merit and meritorious service as, as part of his reasons for raises and so forth. And to be duly noted, I believe his assistant superintendent, Dr. Marcella Kelly, was probably the first woman ever appointed as an assistant superintendent in the state. I'm not sure, but, uh, it was a rarity, uh, but he appointed Dr. Marcella Kelly as his assistant.
So of course, we know how one of our schools is named for her.
Have her honor, right?
Yeah. Yeah, um, I, I, I have Councillor Devine next on the list. Councillor Devine?
Hi, thank you very much, um, for taking up this issue. Um, a couple of things I wanted to say. When I read, um, Dr. Peck's, uh, bio, I was just so impressed by what I read, particularly two things. One, that he was a Navy veteran and my dad was a Navy veteran of twenty-six years. So right away, I was very impressed by him on that. But the other thing was he was also an advocate to pay women teachers more than they were earning. So those are my two things. Everybody else said a lot of great things, but, uh, those two I wanted to bring up. Thank you.
Our council president, uh, Tessa Murphy-Rombeletti.
Thank you, Councillor. Um, hi, everyone. I, um, I, as a Peck Middle School graduate, I'm loving this conversation, of course. Um, and I also, um, I, I wanted to acknowledge the, um, outline that we were sent, um, earlier, uh, I believe earlier today. Um, just about, it, it looked like it was calling for sort of a, a public process. And, um, I know that the, uh, order itself that's on the agenda talked about like what the actual, uh, like reviewing the process for the naming of a new middle school. Um, and so I, my understanding is that it does come down to, um, something that the city council votes on. But I am curious if there is anyone, uh, who is on the school committee that maybe either was involved in this draft, uh, new school naming plan and just like, uh, coming up with the process for, um, public input? Um, and if anyone is, is here tonight that could sort of talk about the, um, the, I guess, the motivation behind even having this conversation? Um, and then, you know, just either way, like what folks are thinking about the thought of, um, engaging stakeholders, um, engaging the community? I think there's a lot of excitement around having a new middle school. Um, I think there's people, uh, from all different backgrounds and all different, um, sides of the aisle in our city who are very excited about the thought of having a new middle school. So what I do appreciate about this plan is that it sort of takes the, um, the excitement of, of all of this and, and, uh, moves that, that motivation forward to engage the community. So I wonder if there's like a way for us to, um, still engage the community in a certain way? Uh, maybe it's, I know here it says like the school colors and the mascot are gonna be decided by the school. But like, I just wanna know how, um, this plan that was presented kind of came to be? And if anyone could provide, um, some background, not just for me, but maybe for folks that are tuning? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I'm, I'm glad you brought that up because that kinda really speaks to item four on the agenda. It might be a good time now for us to make a motion to remove item number four from the committee, which speaks to the, uh, draft new school naming plan. Um, all in favor of removing item number four off the table for discussion?
Second.
All in favor, okay.
Aye.
So moved, okay, very good. And I'd like to recognize, uh, school committee member Willa Han, who can give us some of the background relative to item four and answer, uh, our council president's questions.
Yeah. Thank you for that, Mr. President. Yeah, just, uh, respond to, uh, Councilwoman Devine. Um, my father was a Navy veteran too. USS Warrington. And just to respond to our, um, uh, council president, um, this topic was vetted through our, uh, Diversity Committee. And we have our chairperson here that is, that, um, has been, uh, discussing the project, um, the process, Dr. Rivera Cologne. So I'd just maybe make a motion to introduce her and then she can give a synopsis on the process and where it started and where we are now.
I'm just gonna recognize her, we don't need a motion. Uh, school committee member Rivera Cologne, by all means, we would love to hear your perspective on this, please. Thank you.
Thank you so much and thank you for having me. In September of last year, Mayor Garcia, um, referred the making of an equitable plan for naming the new school for all intents and purposes. And the way that Desi recognized the school, this would be a brand-new school. And as part of that process, it needs a name. And when that was referred to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion, we also did our homework and we read all the information that we could get available about Dr. Peck. And I was, I'm gonna say that even if, regardless of whatever happens, I think that the best part of this was that a lot of other people got to learn about who Dr. Peck was. Cause a lot of the things that happen is that sometimes there are many buildings named after many wonderful people. But after different generations pass, then you lose kind of like, who were these people? Why were they, we would have the honor of naming a building after them? So I, I wanna acknowledge that. And I also wanna say that I know that in the previous item, it said the apparent desire by some to possibly change the name. That's not necessarily the case, it's just that it's a new school and it needs a name. There's, there wasn't anybody who was saying that needed to change. It's just there had to be a process for the new name to come forward. Um, so this was referred to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, which I have the privilege to chair. And together, after we did all our research on Peck, we came up with the help of Mr. Soto and Erin Limble to put together, how could we involve the community? Because there has been so much work into getting a new middle school and we finally got it. And I think, and I'm sure that you will all agree with me that not all the time, there's a lot of public engagement in many of the things that we do. If you look at voter turnout alone, it's something that we are struggling with and we need to hear more voices. And I think that having a new school naming plan that allows for people's voices to be a part of the process helps because it is an actual goal and people will be able to see it once the process goes through. So I think that that's, that's a, a, a win for Hoyok in general. Um, so our task was to make sure that it was equitable. So we put together with the help of Mr. Soto and Erin, um, a process based on other things that we have used to get feedback from different stakeholders in our, in our community. And, um, being able to then put that feedback together, be reviewed by, um, the school committee, which would then make the recommendation as to what the name would be. Uh, at the time when we created the first draft, we were not aware of the two thousand eighteen, um, city, um, ordinance. Um, so as soon as we learned, we updated the, the draft in order to include the last step being that the city council votes on the, um, name for the new school.
Excellent, thank you. That's extremely helpful. And the other thing I wanted to say is there's still a lot, even if the decision is to leave the name, uh, for Dr. Peck, which of course I am preferential towards myself personally, for all the reasons we stated earlier. There's a lot of other things that need to be decided. School colors and different things related to the school, the gymnasium maybe, the auditorium, you know, assuming, I believe, they're gonna have all these different things. There's plenty of different opportunities to involve, um, some really thoughtful decisions around other meaningful people and, uh, significant, uh, you know, uh, contributions or contributors to the community in the spirit of, I think if you look at the ordinance, it really kinda speaks to people who have done tremendous work for the community, uh, who have been long engaged, uh, you know, whether it's military heroes or, uh, or others. You know, there's definitely other ways to honor people. And, uh, we also still, and I do just put it out there for people to consider too, we have certain parks and different things that are not named. I, the, the most obvious that comes to mind is like Community Field. You know, um, you know, it never got named for, for anybody. Um, you know, there's, there's a lot of different things to, to think about and, and certain public buildings and, and otherwise. So, you know, there's maybe some good takeaways from the committee's work in, in other regards, um, too. So that's good that you have a process, you know, for school-related things so that, uh, you know, those contributions can be made. I, one of the other things I thought was really kind of amazing and reading back on his, uh, uh, background was the whole building of the high school. That was kind of at that location on Beach Street, which was kind of all woods and, and in that area was a major project. And wow, did that just was amazing. I think it received the Bellamy Award in nineteen sixty-four, uh, under his leadership. And, uh, and I was gonna ask Anthony, I said, here, here, he was superintendent for forty-three years. So I was gonna ask him if he's, if he, if he's gonna try and beat that record. I'm just wondering, you know? You got a little ways to go, but forty, forty-three years. So we'll, you gotta, we'll be naming the, something the Soto School if, if, if you do. Soto Park.
I think priority has to be given to, to, uh, people that are no longer with us.
Yeah.
That's in the school committee policy.
Very good.
I feel like you're wishing death upon me.
No, 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 no. We need the forty-three years first.
Well, we hope you have lo- longevity too, Anthony.
Yeah, right, right. Um, okay, so I think the good news to take away is let's talk a little timeline. What is the vision? We've got some really cool things coming up. We got a topping ceremony in the months ahead. What's the kind of, if it was the, the s- school leadership? And we certainly have so many school leaders here. What's your perspective on timeline? I know that this order kinda speaks a little bit to that. You're looking to start doing some community outreach, August through October of this year. You're thinking if you could pull it off, is gonna be some point in November of this year, right? That's.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I just wanna make sure for the public's benefit, we, we share that kinda timeline. So we're looking to have something to go for November. So please let us know. Um, you know, we sort of, uh, this is your process at this point and, uh, and we'll be looking for that, uh, that work product, uh, when you're done.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, great. Members, um, I think, are we good with items three and four? Uh, excuse, yeah, three and four, to call those complied with at this time?
Move items three and four are complied with.
Okay.
Second.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none? Uh, all in favor of items three and four being considered complied with?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved, okay.
Move to remove item five from the table?
Is there a second? Okay. Uh, item number five is an order that comes to us from April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four by way of Councillor Ocasio, who is here with us, ordered that the school department provide a crossing guard at the corner of South Bridge and Sergeant Street to protect the children and families crossing the street. Coming to and from Morgan School, this is a very dangerous situation that needs immediate attention. All in favor of taking this item up?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Um, recognizing Councillor Ocasio, you wanna speak to your order? And maybe why you filed it and some of the things that you're seeing? And we can have a dialogue.
Just quickly, a typo. I think Sergeant Street has an A in it.
Okay, so noted. And we have the English, uh, teacher slash professor.
I'm not sure, I think it's S, S A R G E A N T.
I think you are correct. Uh, Councillor Ocasio.
Okay, the reason why I, the reason why I put in this order was because I started volunteering, um, helping, uh, Morgan School, uh, crossing the street, uh, making sure that the kids cross the street safely. Um, and I noticed that there wasn't no crossing guard there. But there was one in the afternoon on South Summer Street. So in the morning, when the parents drop off the kids on, on South Bridge Street, it's very congested. Um, we talked to some of the parents. Some of them are like, you know, over the top. So, um, and I, I, I talked to the principal of Morgan School about it. I don't know if, um, I forgot his last name, Ray? What's his last name? Huh? Yes.
I suppose Sasha.
I don't know if Ray Figaro, um, talked to, um, the principal about, you know, the issues that, what they've been having out there. Um, because some of, is it, so South Bridge Street is a two-way street. So we lined up the, the cars on the, the closest side that is to the, um, to the playground. So the kids won't have to be crossing. So all the parents are supposed to be parking on the opposite side. But then they come late or whatever and they, they're just zooming through, you know, to drop the kids off and just sending them to cross the street. And then the, the, some of the parents already had dropped off their kids are pulling out, you know, to, to get going. So that's where the congestion is at, it's right there, right on, um, South Bridge and Sergeant. Right there in that corner, right there, that spot right there. So, and a few kids almost got hit, you know? And we tried to cross them safely because the parents just get, open the door and just tell them to cross and that's not safe. So I, um, there's a gentleman that, that he goes there every day. I think he's, he's also a cross, um, guard. And he's willing to, to do that part there because he takes his kids every day to the school. It's just a half an hour, you know, thing. It's just when they're dropping off the kids and everybody's gone. So it's basically a half, half an hour. But that half an hour there is very dangerous. So, and my concern, like I said, is, is the kids in, and you can tell people things until your face turn blue and for the safety of their own children and they're still not getting it, you know? So, um, and right now, ever since I, I brought it to the city council attention, they, the lady that was on the South Summer corner, you know, when the kids were. Corner, you know, when the kids were let out, let out of school, she's no longer there either. So we have no, no crossing guard at all. You know, in the morning or in the afternoon. So in through both streets, they they speed through both streets, you know, I, I'm trying to get um. Tree humps um, on both sides, on, on Sa- on South Bridge and South Summer to slow down the traffic because they just turned, they don't care. If anybody's there, you know, and I'm afraid that they're gonna, you know, it's gonna be consequences down the road because it's getting more congested now. Now that we have more kids within the Morgan School, so. And the blinking light that that's there on Adam and South Summer Street that I noticed the other day because the tree is literally like covering it. And it says uh, the speed limit twenty and supposed to then the, the light's supposed to be on. Um, I just happened to look up to the sky, all of a sudden getting out of the car and I spotted it. I'm like, oh, that was there? I never saw it because the tree is covering it. So that's never been on either. So, um, and then when parents are coming in late, they come up Adam. And and drop off the kids right there at the corner and just keep it pushing, you know, they're just, they, they don't even cross the kids to. To the school or take them inside or anything, they just leave them there. You know, so it's, it's, it's bad, it's bad. And and I live right there too, so I know, I see it every day.
Um, Councilor Graney?
Just, just quickly, I'm fully in support of Councilor Ocasio's order here. Uh, it sounds like it's a definite safety hazard for the children. Uh, so I'd like to make a request to uh, Receiver Soto, if he could find the funds to place a crossing guard. At this, certainly, you know, by September, uh, because uh, the schools are almost out at this point in time. It would be very, very helpful to uh, to the children that are at risk at that location. Thank you.
School committee member Collmore.
Uh, just, not a correction, but uh, an interpretation. The crossing guards for our schools are under the police department budget and the city of Holyoke's budget, not, not the school department budget. And they uh, they're the ones that hire the crossing guards and the police department is the one that pays the crossing guards.
I'd, I'd like to respond to that.
Okay, uh, Anthony, if you could help us?
Yeah, so we've had an agreement with the police department for many years and um, you know, with the change in the chief of police. Um, and a new MOU, I think it got la- lost in translation, but. Since, I, I remember because I was overseeing transportation, there was always an agreement with the police department. That we would actually pay them. It wasn't a a significant amount of money. It was like five thousand dollars for the entire year. For them to um, hire, train and monitor. You know, to make sure that crossing guards were on their posts. So, um, we had, you know, we always had a point of contact at the police department that would do that. And they actually submit payroll. It, it isn't part of the police department budget, it's part of the school department budget. But it is one of those things that's on top of net school spending, just like transportation is. So if, if we are looking to add another guard, it would be another twelve thousand dollars, but it would be an additional. Uh, appropriation that we would have to ask the city council for. Um, or we can take a look at all of our crossing guard posts. And see if there are any that, that have lower traffic patterns or lower, a low amount of students crossing. Um, to see if, if we can change a post from one post to another, which wouldn't be an additional cost. Um, and to uh, Councilor Ocasio's point too, uh, this, you know, this was one of the areas for sure, one hundred percent. That we've had staffing challenges and so the police, we post the positions and the police department helps us hire and train these folks, but. Um, I, I can't tell you that like they have perfect attendance and that and they're, you know, when one is out and. You know, not reporting to work for a week or so, like, it takes a little while to, to know that that is happening. Um, I do, you know, recently have gotten into some conversations with the police department. Um, you know, some confusion around their role and like, hey, we, we shouldn't be doing that anymore and stuff, so. I do have to talk to the chief about it because I think this is something that has been happening forever. And it, it was helpful so that like, you know, one hour a day, the, they would have patrols around just making sure that. The crossing guards that are supposed to be working are actually working and submitting to our payroll department. You know, when somebody's absent or 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 whatnot. Um, I don't fully know what the traffic pattern is for this intersection. Um, I don't think that South Summer is, is one of those like cut-through roads like Main Street is and like. High Street is and like Cabot Street is where we have, you know, forty thousand cars. Passing by every morning, but that is some of the uh, research that happens before you put a crossing guard in place is. Looking at traffic patterns, looking at how many students are walking. I don't know how many students are actually crossing that intersection. Um, but those are some things that we could certainly look into and um, if it does. Result in, in adding an additional crossing guard, I'd be happy to have that conversation with the council as well, but if it's something where we could repurpos- purpose. One of our posts and move them down to that area, um, if it makes sense, I mean, I, I, I have to say that. You know, if we have like only four or five students crossing that intersection. Um, you know, we, we gotta have an honest conversation. I'm not saying that. I'm not implying that four or five kids needing to cross isn't a safety concern. I'm just saying like those are some points that go into making a decision like this and I think we should look into that. Um, and I'd be happy to have our, our, our safety, uh, transportation. Durham has a safety officer that could help us, you know, map all that and we could work with the uh, the police department as well.
If I could just, just for a moment.
Forty-one thousand dollars a year on crossing guards and each one costs about twelve thousand. Councilor, sorry to cut you off, I'm done.
No, no, you're, you're fine, um, cause and actually what you're leading into is what I wanted to kinda ask is I think the next steps here. And I'm gonna turn it over back to Carmen Ocasio in a moment, but is to have sort of the day-to-day. Who's overseeing the crossing guards? Who decides it's this intersection versus this intersection? Like, who's in charge of the plan? And then what kinda data are we collecting? I- is it once every, you know, every couple of months, you guys have a hand clicker? Where they're actually, you know, counting how many students they actually crossed in a course of a day? You know, um, that might, and if they're not doing that, that might be good. Right there, they're giving each a hand counter and we say, okay, I had eighty-two kids this week that crossed or I got. I'm averaging fourteen a day or what, whatever that number is. And then that could all be compiled and then the safety officer can come into the committee and say. Wow, I mean, like, these seven intersections are massive. Then you got these three that are kinda in the middle and then these two are kinda like, eh, maybe we could redeploy. You know, to this area. Now, now you're, you're kinda moving your troops around and. That would be, I would think, at some point, the person we would wanna have come in. And talk about how day-to-day this functions and people are evaluated and the needs are evaluated. Does, does that make sense?
It does.
Yes, it does.
Okay, uh, Councilor Ocasio.
Um, the, the main, so. So the police department is the one that's in charge of um, paying uh, these um, crossing guards off.
I think it's the school committee gives them the money from the bu- from the hundred and forty-one thousand.
Okay, cause um.
Yeah, we, we, the school department pays for it. The city council, the city actually appropriates. On top of net school spending, the city council appropriates an allocation for crossing guards. It's about a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. The only, the only involvement that the police department have is that they help hire, train and monitor that they're working. That has been past practice, that would, there was actually an agreement in place. And more recently with the new uh, chief, there's been question about like, hey, we're not doing that and. So like, I, I need to revisit that conversation with the chief because I don't know when. Um, I don't know if there's some staffing issues over there or I don't know when the decision or the question came up as to like, why are we doing this? Um, so, you know, it is a conversation that I have to have with the chief. But they, all they did was they didn't, they didn't pay for them. What they did was they would hire them, they would train them. Um, they would actually have the safety vest and the stop signs and stuff. We would pay for them, but they would actually be housed at the police department. And then what they would do is kinda patrol, right? Every morning, that was part of their normal route. To make sure the, that the crossing guards were working so that when payroll reaches out. Um, to the police department and says, hey, we need the payroll for the crossing guards. They would sign off to say like, yep, these people work these days and we would get, we would process their pay.
Councilor Graney?
Just, just quickly, the twelve thousand dollars is a small price to pay to make sure our children are safe. Number one, and sometimes the smallest intersections can be the most dangerous. So.
Yep.
You know, we have no, no way of knowing what the traffic patterns are. Uh, one certain day could, could, it could be tragic. So twelve thousand dollars to, to see a significant need according to uh, Councilor Ocasio. Uh, I think would be something that, that we, we could send before the city council to appropriate that kind of money. And I think it would be received very, very uh, positively by the uh, city council. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, if you think about it, we could use a one month worth of our interest off the stabilization fund and pay for a crossing guard for the whole year. Um, and if we save some, you know, we save some kid's life, what's twelve grand, right? So, um, that's something that we'll have to consider, but I think at some point, and I'm gonna recognize a school committee member Williams in a moment, but. I think we're gonna need to have a dialogue, to have folks come in and. Anthony, you'll talk to, you'll have that conversation with the police and kinda, you can kinda see where we're going with this. We need data, we need a representative to come in. And have a conversation with us about kinda where we're at with the crossing guards and then. Let's kinda map out the need and then see how this one fits in and if there just isn't enough money. To cover all these really high-need intersections, then we gotta talk about getting more money. Right? Okay, uh, school committee member Williams.
Um, I just want to say, one child hurt is too many. Um, so we need to really get on this right away and, and I know you don't wanna put it in the dead file, but. We need to kinda get on this. This is very important because if my kids was in school. You know, I'd probably come up with the money myself because we need to, this money, okay? So we're for it.
And this is your ward.
That, well, that's what I'm talking about. Don't make me do a donation. I'll do it.
We're not gonna take up a collection, I hope.
All right, I did it for women.
We can find, we'll find it. Uh, school committee member Willahen.
Thank you. Um, so I thank the Ward One Councilor for bringing this to our attention. It kinda, you know. It's like it kinda morphed into a, a bigger, bigger uh, topic, you know, with the police and the, you know, the handshake deal of. Who's supporting who and I'd like to get that um, rectified and have maybe the police commander, Ms. Soto, file a report. Just to say what, what's the process, who's responsible for what area, you know, who's responsible for the training, you know, the funding is one thing. I'm not that concerned about that, but just who's in charge of the process, you know, and.
Day-to-day.
You know, um, we don't wanna see the kids, you know, again, if, if someone, if a crossing guard is not showing up to work for a week. No one knows about it? I mean, come on. Um, and I just in my own ward, Ward Five, I know, um, I know the Ward Five, uh, um, city council, um, Linda Vacan and myself. It, um, it took us a while to, to get a painted crosswalk in front of McMahon School because we have a crossing guard there. And the parent, parents are dropping off the kids and they're not, some of them are not um, adhering to the, the rules of the road. And dropping off their kids when they're not supposed to. There's people going up the road at a fast rate of speed. And because there's no crosswalk, they really weren't taking the crossing guards authority into play. You know, so we, it took us a while to work with the, the DPW. That might be um, probably someone else that uh, we might wanna have into just to make sure. That maybe not only is there a crossing guard, but there's a crosswalk. And sometimes that, that helps in terms of the, the drivers when they see that. Thank you.
All right, uh, members, any, anybody else on the crossing guard issue? I, it's probably a good idea that we table this, don't you agree? And then we see, we're gonna, uh, Anthony, I think we're gonna lean on you to um, you know, connect with the police, the safety officer. And kinda gather your thoughts on this and uh, kinda let us know where you're, where we're at. We have an eye towards data, like what are, maybe you could, let's start with, we've got approximately, let's say if they're twelve thousand each, my, my mouth, I think should be pretty good. That's about twelve guards. And uh, so if we have twelve guards, like what's the twelve intersections that they're currently at? And uh, you know, if, if we have any data as to how frequently those used, I mean, some of them might be obvious, right? They're like the busiest intersections near a school. But um, and then let's have folks in and then let's kinda talk about how we can. You know, do something here for this Ward Two situation and if we need to have another one, you know, so we'll follow up at the next meetings, that.
Move the table.
All right. As a second, motion's been made and seconded to the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Also moved, item five is table. We have one item left, members. Motion to take item six off the table?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to take item six off the table. That's an order filed by Councilor McGrath Smith. Dated April second, two thousand twenty-four, ordered that City Council Rule ten D be revisited in discussion. Um, it states that every month, the city council shall invite in a Holyoke school student to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And uh, I'll just give you a little background of this. We have this. Um, actually, this goes actually way back a bit from Councilor Ferrera. Who um, had filed this about having student volunteer. Uh, or a student ambassador and then also morphed into having a Holyoke school student lead us. Um, in the uh, Pledge of Allegiance at before our meetings. And we were kinda wanted to brainstorm with you and speaking to her about maybe we get one person on a rotation, maybe for, does it for a couple of months? You know, we have two meetings a month, so maybe like four meetings. Uh, or have six people do two meetings, uh, you know, however you wanted to devise, but wanted to see if we could seek. The school department's uh, encouragement of trying to get some volunteer students. Um, could be different ages, could be different schools, so however you would like to do it, we just wanna extend this. Uh, invitation to have the children uh, participate. We think it's a great civic engagement for them to one. See the legislative uh, chambers of their city and to lead us in, 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 in honoring our nation, so uh, school committee member Willahen.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for the order. Um. This topic has been coming up at um, from the city council and their sub committees. I know there's a, you had this rule on the books, but. It's not really being followed, I guess, for the last decade or so. Um, I think it's a good idea. I know we have um, student reps that attend and participate. Um, for the school board meetings on a regular basis. Um, I'd like maybe amend this to maybe make it not specifically a, a student, but maybe a class, you know. We could rotate the classes, you know, first grade, first grade class at McMahon, second grade class at. Dunnehew, I, I think having the children in as a group will. I, I think having the children in as a group will be more significant and meaningful than having one, one student. Thank you.
That's a great idea. How, what we're looking for is however you want to do it. And, and it's coming back to the other plan that we talked about earlier. We're just looking for your leadership, if, could you bring this up at a meeting of your school committee and kind of think this through with the school leadership, how you could pull this off? And then come back to a future one of our meetings and say, you know, we, we brainstormed on this and we would like to do X. And then I think you'll have us accept whatever your plan is, open arms, if that makes sense. Okay. Nice, nice. Yeah, uh, yeah, Counselor Willahen.
Real quick, thank you. Um, I forgot to mention that we have a student showcase, um, each, each meeting on those, we have a, a, uh, a group of students that come in and they'll show us what they're working on, you know, the drama club, um, the drama team, um, um, music department. So, that's another feature that, that we, that we have to, just to get, you know, the parents involved and the students. Thank you.
Excellent. So, I'm gonna recommend that, um, we adopt the order and refer it to, uh, the school committee, uh, for your plan. And then if you would file that as a communication back to the city council, what you decide, then we'll send it to this committee and we'll put it in action and make it happen. Does that make sense?
Good.
Okay, great. Any other discussion we want to have on this? Okay, all right, very good. Uh, order that the order be adopted and referred to the school committee for a, uh, a plan. Okay, all right. Oh, and I see Counselor Devine would like to be recognized, Counselor Devine?
Um, unmute, am I un-
Yeah, you're good, yeah, we can hear you. Now you're on mute, you muted, you were perfect until you hit mute. Patty, go ahead.
I'm, oh, I'm sorry, you didn't hear me?
Yeah.
Did you hear me?
Yes.
Now we can, we can hear you now.
Oh, okay, sorry. What I was, I was saying is that, um, I think you have to take a, a roll call vote on every item because of, uh, our rule.
Okay.
You know, because test is online rather than in the, in the chambers.
Okay, thank you, we appreciate that. Uh, all right, so maybe we'll go back and, uh, we'll re-codify before we adjourn. Thank you, Patty. Uh, we'll re-codify our votes on, uh, all those in one collective roll call. Uh, so on item six, uh, on the motion to adopt the, uh, order and to refer it to the, uh, school committee for their, uh, consideration, um, and report back to the city council with their plan. Uh, is there a second for that?
Yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll call the roll and, uh, the six members of the committee, we'll start with the school committee members, Willahen.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Collmore.
Yes.
Graney.
Yes.
Murphy Ramboletti.
Yes.
Jordane, yes. Uh, members, I'd like to revisit, reconsider our actions on items one through five.
So moved, we consider, uh, one through five, items one through five on the agenda.
Okay, uh, let's take a roll call on that. A motion to reconsider our actions on items one through five, um, and to put them before us again. Um, Willahen?
Yes.
Collmore.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Graney.
Yes.
Murphy Ramboletti.
Yes.
Jordane, yes. Uh, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes, uh, we, that we receive and adopt the minutes of, uh, item one, that we consider item two complied with, that we consider item three complied with, that we consider item four complied with, that we table item five.
Second.
Is there a second? Okay, uh, I will call the roll. Willahen.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Collmore.
Yes.
Graney.
Yes.
Murphy Ramboletti.
Yes.
Jordane, yes. Ladies and gentlemen, that is the end of our agenda, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, and, and there's a second by Collmore, we're now gonna take a roll call vote to adjourn. And if we vote no, we'll have to stay. Willahen.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Collmore.
Yes.
Graney.
Yes.
Murphy Ramboletti.
Yes.
Jordane, yes, we do stand adjourned. I thank everyone for a wonderful evening and a wonderful meeting.
Thank you.
And Celtics three zero, so we love that too. Have a wonderful night, bye-bye.